Hey, it's 6:30 and I'll call this meeting to order. Chairman's comments, I have some information for the business. Do you have anything, Bill?
Nope.
George?
No.
Public comments?
Yep.
Go ahead, you need a mic. It was on.
It's on, so.
The town hall advisory committee met this morning. And we determined, it's our opinion anyway, that there does not need to be any exterior painting of this building this year. It's looking pretty good. And so, and we also wondered if it could be something added to the capital improvement plan so that it was put onto a cycle where like maybe every five years, the whole building was painted.
Okay.
Rather than doing, because just one side isn't much of a job for a contractor to come and do.
Yep.
And just thought it might be more practical to just have it be on a cycle of maybe every five years.
That makes sense, yeah.
That's our suggestion.
Okay, now, we'll pass it on to the CIP.
Yeah, we can run it to BAC as well.
Yeah.
The advisory committee does not have a key to the upstairs room that the Bannon Historical Society use. We would like to have one.
Yeah, they seem to be very rare. I might have one and I'll give you mine.
I have one with keys that might be that.
You can take it and your keys.
I'm not sure which one it is, though.
I've got a bunch. Well, we can try it before you leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, upstairs room.
One of these, I.
The room that the Bannon, the Historical Society share.
One of those.
Try that.
And we would like to be included in any activity that happens in this building, not the use of it, but when you, someone spots something that needs to be done, I'd like to have it be an email or something included for this committee. Because we haven't heard anything from anybody.
Well, we haven't done anything either.
The only thing, we placed that closer, I did, and then we fixed the front door because it was falling apart, not the front door, but the hardware on the front door. So there was no, there was no cost there, we did save for that. We did have a leak under the sink in the kitchen, but it was from the spray head. It got loose and was dripping down below, but I since figured that out, we got that fixed, that it didn't cost anything either, so.
It's not so much the cost, it's just, we'd like to know what's going on.
Yeah, we'll try to remember to fill you in.
Okay. And who cleans the building?
We have the same cleaning for every, all the buildings. Carol knows who it is.
Caleb, he does the elementary school, he does Mason, he does.
I see, well, whoever it is, they're doing a good job, except can we have the windows washed?
I don't know, is that, I don't know if that's in the, we might, that might be a special thing.
Okay.
We'll see, inside or outside or both?
Both. And the storm, storms need to be pulled down. Screens, screens put up, storms come down.
Yeah, we can get Highway to do that.
Because that's a, it's getting that time here.
Really easy enough to do.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
Okay.
And I will take the minutes and everything down to Carol.
Uh, nothing else for public comment? Anniversary fund, Julie?
Julie. Yes?
Unfortunately, they can't hear us.
Okay, alright.
Don't have the microphones.
I wanted to have a discussion with you all about how we do and can and cannot disperse funds for the anniversary fund. We had a problem this last August where the advisory committee met, there was two applications, we thought they were good applications, we approved them, we came, I came to the select board, it was approved here at the select board, and then Sherry informed me that she didn't think it was appropriate to get funds to those two projects because it had to, the funds would have had to go through an individual who's not a nonprofit entity in order to pay for the project. So I had sent you all a letter stating this and some supporting information, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, from the New Hampshire, I corresponded with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation to see if they had any good information about.
When did you send it?
At least a month ago.
Well, I'm sure I sent it to you at the time, probably just.
Okay, I don't remember.
I sent it to Carol, to forward to all of you. So I corresponded with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, they have a statement I can, I'll read it to you. And I also, I also want to know what the statement in the new, your new financial procedures document, what it really means in relation to the anniversary fund, because it's vague, it says, "The treasurer by statute has custody of," oh, this is in regards to the treasurer, "has custody of separate financial accounts for several town entities such as blah, 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 and the 250th anniversary fund. The treasurer receives deposits, pays out funds at their request, and maintains, maintains all records." And then there's more about details and statements. I don't know if that's, is that a new paragraph that was put into this new, when you reissued the financial procedure?
Yeah, and we're going to revise, we already know there's a problem with some of this around the treasurer's duties, it was revised to include the treasurer's duties, and that was really the main change.
Uh huh.
This was, Peter Allen wanted to insert all this treasurer stuff. So, the procedures should be the correct procedures, but we found at least one case where it's not, so we're revising that.
So you're going to revise this again?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a new revision coming.
A new revision, so what will that mean? I mean, what my interest is, I need to know how to disperse these funds, I mean, I work for you all. And if I can't, I don't know how to award, to okay an award if it can't go to an individual who's proposing a project. If, if it's true, as Sherry says, that she only can disburse the anniversary fund monies to a nonprofit.
It depends on how that fund was set up, we'll have to look at it, and gosh, it's probably been set up ages ago.
Twenty, 2008?
Yeah.
And the letter from, and I can, actually, I think, thanks.
I think we'd have to read into that a little more too, because it doesn't make sense that you can only do it to a nonprofit.
Right.
Well, Sherry's reasoning for that was if she hands an individual, I checked, this, this is from, for, I only made two copies, but it's one response I got from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. Sherry's point was that it would be taxable to that individual, that she'd be giving these designated funds to an individual for a project, she didn't want to do it because she felt that individual needed to report it on their individual tax return, which I've tried to look at some language for the IRS and the state statutes, and there's some paragraphs that could be interpreted, that it's okay to give money to an individual, but I, I can't, you need your lawyer to really decide what they're saying.
Yeah, we can check with our auditors, they would know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And this, the woman, Amy Langel, who wrote that letter to me, suggested going, that you might be able to get advice through the municipal association?
Yeah, sometimes they will, frequently they'll say, you should consult with your auditor, lawyer.
Right, and she seems to say it's up to the town to decide what their, what your rules and regs are.
Yes, it is, but if, if the fund was written with specific restrictions, then we can't change that.
Well, the restriction is only, I know what the restriction is, that is, that the funds have to be used for charitable purposes to benefit the town, which would not normally be in the town budget, can't be something at town meeting, can't be a warrant article, has to be something outside of that, that's the restriction, and it, it doesn't, it could be, it can be for scholarship, you know, we could give to an individual or to a group, and it could be, in the past, we've always done it for town projects or village green or something.
Right, but unless it's over $600, they don't necessarily have to pay taxes on it. But at the same point too, the point I was trying to make last time you were here, is we have no way of accounting for what they're using it for, neither do they, so if they were to submit receipts to you that have already been paid, and for that situation, whatever it may be.
Right.
Then you can reimburse them for that, and that's not.
Okay, that's, that's interesting, because that's the opposite of the way we've always worked, our, the committee that I've been on since inception has always made it a policy that we don't reimburse you for something you've been able to pay for, that if you have a project and you need funds, you come with an estimate or an invoice, you know, an estimate invoice from wherever for what your needs are, we look at that and give you the funds and then follow up and make sure that you did the project.
Okay, well, we'll check with the auditors, that's the best way to figure this out.
Yeah, yeah, find out, because we just need better guidance, and I don't, I don't want to put out these calls and say, hey, please apply for these funds, and people do, and then they find out they can't have them, I mean, it just puts us in an awkward position.
Trust funds can be paid to individuals, like a scholarship fund.
Right.
Now, maybe that is because it states that's the purpose of it, but we'll find out.
Yeah, yeah, okay, please do, and then I think that's it, yeah, we just need clear guidance about how to advertise the fund and then how to distribute.
Okay. Anything else on the anniversary fund?
We'll just talk, the account, the accountants and auditors will know a whole lot more than we will.
They'll push us in the right direction, we hope. Cam's up next on the agenda, but I do have to say that we have a pending meeting with our lawyer, and I don't know what you want to say, but we really can't say anything to you at this point.
You haven't said anything to this point, anyway.
That's because we haven't talked to the lawyer yet.
Because we've been going back and forth, they were on vacation.
They were on vacation in September also, anyway. If you want to make a record, it's important to make a complete record, so I've tried to do this for you. And this is to the Temple Select Board, Ken Case, Chair, Bill Lazzell, George Willard, regarding Perkins Lane, a Class 5 gravel highway in Temple, New Hampshire. My name is Camilla Lockwood, I moved into my new house at 56 Perkins Lane in October of 2011. My grandmother, Catherine Lackey, moved into her new house at 48 Perkins Lane around 1936, and her sister Julia Hyde moved halfway down Perkins Lane to what is now Number 30, owned by the Johnstons. Sometimes later, my grandfather Admiral Henry Lackey retired to Number 48. There was a serious squall around August 13th, 2025, not surprisingly, it did some damage to Perkins Lane. Repairs were done to the midway of the road near Johnstons, however, the gullies on my end remained. Friday afternoon the following week, I stopped by the Highway Department to inquire about repairs to the upper quarter of Perkins. Road Agent Perry said it was a private driveway, he would no longer work on it, and I could get Timmy to fix it. Timothy Fisk was the road agent before Agent Perry for many years. I had received no notice of this declaration. Agent Perry's remarks were my first information. I went to the next selectman's meeting, September 26th, hoping for more information. I related the above exchange and asked if the board had known about the road being declared driveway. There was no response. Selectman Lazzell was absent that evening. I requested Agent Perry or the select board send me copies of the pages he was displaying as proof of his edict so that I could properly respond. Nothing. Agent Perry had attempted in January to decommission the road and several others so that the town would not have to maintain them. I went to the selectman's meeting October 14th because another road, which had been selected for decommissioning, was on the agenda along with quote, "other roads." The board agreed, the other road, which the owner wants to be a private drive, it has to be decided at town meeting. No information concerning the status of Perkins Lane was forthcoming. In New Hampshire, it is generally agreed, and the statute supports the premise that the select board is the governing body of the town, and their role is to manage the prudential affairs of the town, all quotes. This includes managing town roads. Perkins Lane is not my road, it's the selectman's road. Agent Perry is their road agent. Perkins Lane is a very old road, yet the select board takes no position on their road. The suggestion that a piece of the road is a private driveway is ludicrous. I can assure you that neither my grandmother nor her sister, ladies of middle years, maintained Perkins Lane. The Admiral, when he came home from the sea, certainly didn't, nor did Henry Fish, who mowed the lawn and did miscellaneous tasks for the family. In my lifetime, I have known a few of Temple's road agents, Wilford Weston, Clemmie, Charlie Willard, Harold Colgrin, they all worked on Perkins Lane, and of course, Tim Fisk, who gave me advice on how best to design the final end of Perkins Lane to facilitate turning around the big machines run by his department. I talked this whole matter over with friends, one suggested perhaps the powers that be are pulling my chain, sort of like a joke, to see what I'll do about it, will I just suck it up? Get over it? October 15th, I received copies of parts of the tax map and parts of a survey, which was drawn in connection with the conservation easement on the land, there's an arrow and a sketch on these. No suggestion is what they represent, no further inquiry, no comment, in a word, crickets. This is my third attendance at a selectman's meeting, trying to get a handle on what's going on. This is a strange way to treat a resident who has been bullied with an edict from a road agent that will seriously interfere with her access to her home. I believe this select board is falling very short of its professional obligations and is not living up to the oath sworn when elected, very truly yours.
You will get a response when we have legal representation, tell us what our response should be.
Carol? Can we add that as an attachment to the minutes for this meeting?
Yep.
Anything else on Perkins Lane? Thank you. Grover Lane, I guess that's why Priscilla's here, you need a microphone?
Good luck.
I'm here to ask the town to take over responsibility for Grover Lane. It's a short little road, my neighbor, who has the equipment, has been doing it for the last 21 years, and I think he's going to be selling his house shortly, so I'm just asking if the town would consider maintaining it.
Okay, so it's currently a private, private road currently?
Yes, there are three homes on the road.
Okay.
But it is a private road, you need to maintain.
That would have to be done at town meeting.
Town meeting, okay.
Yeah.
How do we do that?
Well, we need a warrant article, I'll have to find out the details, that basically auth says, do you vote to have the town take this over as a town road?
Yep.
Okay.
I thought Kent is going to be here, he's got some opinion on that even happening that, that way, so I, I don't know if we want to talk to him or.
Well, it could always be a petition warrant article too.
Yeah, and I know the biggest problem with the road is that road is not up to current specs for zoning, it's, it's, it's how you build a road and zoning now that wasn't there before, so I don't know if that counts, so we have to talk to legal and find out what is going on, but you can always do a petition warrant article, which is, you write up the article to say what you want it to say, and then you need 25 signatures to go with it, and then we can talk about it at town meeting as well. If there's anything we can do in the meantime, I will, I will see what we can do and we'll get ahold of you and let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is, actually relates to CAM's, the state has made it clear that the towns cannot go onto private roads to do any kind of work.
Private property.
Private, we've been violating that for years, but they're cracking down on that now, and so is our insurance company.
Somebody had told me from town that any road that had more than two or three houses on it would be considered.
No, that's not necessarily true.
Okay.
I mean, if it was built to today's specs, then if you guys wanted to turn the road over to the town?
Yeah.
We could accept that.
How would we do that?
But you'd have to build it to specs, so it would all have to be dug up, you'd have to put certain amounts of gravel and drainage and everything else in there in order to bring it up to specs, and I don't know at this point if that would be, wow, be worth it, so.
Right, that's going to be the point, well, it still would be a warrant article, the point's going to be how much money the town would have to put into making that road a town road, and you're probably going to get pushback on that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and even if it did, you know, you'd still be a secondary road, so it would never get plowed until the end of the snowstorm, you know, they wouldn't go up there and just push stuff out of the way so it could get to work, because the buses don't go up there, and they have to clear all the bus roads first, you know?
Okay, thank you very much.
Just something for you to think about, we'll see what we can do on our end.
Yeah, we'll know a lot more about all this sort of stuff after we speak to legal about CAM's thing.
Thank you. Anything else on Grover Lane? Town Hall cordless microphones and stands. George, I believe you brought this? Did you or did?
Did.
I did?
Yeah, you said put it on the agenda next.
Yeah, George, George, you had mentioned it to me, so we want to make sure we get it on here. Do we want to look at that instead of this and wires everywhere? I mean, because.
Oh, use cordless mics for everything?
Just use cordless mics here, we'll get four cordless mics, four stands, more than, because we have three of these now. Or we could get three more and have one or two for the audience.
That would sure be a lot less hassle than having to set these things up and take them down all the time.
This is a pain, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
You know, this isn't bad if you can leave it out like this, but every day we have to, you know, 10 minutes before the meeting, you got to put it out, and 10 minutes after the meeting, you got to get rid of it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with looking into it, at least.
Okay, should we ask? Bring crap again.
Somebody who lives here or some.
Somebody who lives here, that does all this.
Keith Charlton.
Keith Charlton.
Yeah.
Should we ask him to get ahold of East Coast and see if we can't get?
Yeah, sure.
More microphones, or do we want to just buy more microphones? I don't know what it takes to.
I don't either.
I mean, he's got this on WL1, but I don't know what these are on either.
Yeah, I don't know how many microphones the thing will even support, Keith can find out all this stuff.
Yeah. All right, so we'll send a note to Keith and ask him to get us prices on that?
Yep.
Okay, and then we have some permits. First one is Beal, Piedmont Road, new house, on a, I'm already approved subdivision of their lots over there. I figured out all this stuff, and I had a conversation with Haley on, she had wrote on the permit, the permit was the 1600, 1600 square feet that was approved, but that's not necessarily the language of it, the house is 2,400 square feet? My top page is gone. But anyways, I mean, unless that's a problem, they have everything else signed off.
Still need Kent and Pete's signature on it, so it would be pending there.
Okay.
Okay. The cost page put in here, Carol or the left?
It's on the original here that.
Are you, we don't have it here? Pretty sure it came out to 2,400 square feet. It's right here.
Yeah, it has a full print or that, it doesn't say or all, what I call this for everything.
And how we, how we do it, according to Avatar, our assessors, is you measure the outside of the building, so it's the outside's not necessarily actual living space because you can't live in the wall and.
Yeah, actual footprint on the ground.
Yep. Right, but it has an 800 foot second floor, 800 square foot second floor, which would, which would put you over the 1600, that's why I, that's why I had asked Haley the question. Right. It's a 1600, okay. Yep, nope, that's fine.
Yeah.
So I mean, just so we have it on record, I make a motion that we sign the permit for Haley and, and I guess Devon.
Yeah, conditional on the other approvals.
Carol, was.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then she won't give you a permit till you pay for it, so.
She did, she actually brought the permit down today.
So don't let us hold you up.
I'll have it tomorrow.
Pete and Kent, your driveway, you got to get a driveway permit and have that done? Yep, just give them a call, he'll, he'll do it right on the spot. Yep, okay, if you have a hard time, call me and I'll get ahold of them for you, okay? Phones are done, Beal done, solar permit Hendrickson on Coburn Road?
Roof mount, alright.
Yeah, it's a roof mount.
Did you have something or it was visiting?
Okay. And this came with all of the how to's and what for, so I didn't have a problem with And this came with all of the how-tos and what-for, so I didn't have a problem with this one.
All right. Move we approve the solar permit.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one is permit Grimes Glen Farm Road for a shed, which is 10 by 16, 160 feet, which is under, which is over the 125.
Oh, 125, geez.
So they do need a permit.
Yep.
And this is right on the back. And then I think we have some more?
Yep.
We did the key phone. And then we should have a permit for a shed and electric upgrade, not electric upgrade, but electrical.
Electricals don't go on here. They're, they're just approved. Once I get building inspector approval, I approve them. I did email Ben to him already.
Which comes to another thing, but so the monks, we have the shed?
No, that's what, that's about.
You want to do that one now, you said?
Yeah, the monks. So this shed is to house the electrical equipment, to shut off and the disconnects for the solar array that they've already had a permit in for.
Okay. Geez, must be a pretty big one.
And I believe that should do it for permits.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we have some other business. I asked the last meeting that we get a plaque for Leslie Williams, who's going out of town.
Yep.
The meeting, and we're going to have some food there, is on the 3rd of November at 7 o'clock. And I'd like to invite both of you to join us, and we can present her with a plaque. If not, I will, but you're both welcome to come and have some food and wish her well.
Where is it?
At the fire department.
Okay. I don't know if I have that night or not. I'll look.
So I'll let George talk about this, but I went by there today, George, and honestly, I never saw what I saw there today is what I saw before. Because the trees were all in front of his house. I couldn't see anything. And then I went around the corner and you saw the stuff he had in the woods there. And that's what I was looking, I wasn't looking at where he was living and currently has all this stuff. So you want to talk about this?
Yes. I had some people on Hudson Roads that came to me, and they complained about Nick Gross, all the stuff he has gathered around the cul-de-sac close to the road. And he's just got, it's like a junkyard up there.
Yep.
So I told these people that they should sign this, write up a petition, sign it, and present it to the Select Board, and that we should go to the request that he go to the planning board and the CBA. And I also thought that we should confer with our legal counsel regarding this matter, because it's really, it's really harming the property values of the people that live in there.
Now, what kind of, is it cars or is it?
Everything. It's, that's a residential area.
He's got cars, trucks, truck bodies, trucks, cars. He's got a trailer with something sitting right out on the road. Right on the circle. It's sitting right there. It's not even on his property. It's, it's on the road itself.
Okay, this sounds like something we can enforce. If you remember from when that other thing came up with the place up on...
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just random junk, we cannot do anything about. There's nothing in our zoning about just random stuff. Vehicles, we can.
Yes, but it's also within the 35-foot set that. And the cul-de-sac, there's a cul-de-sac there with like a donut. And inside that donut, that's town property.
Okay, so if he's got unregistered vehicles there, that sort of stuff.
They're only allowed two unregistered vehicles.
Yeah, we can get him for that. He's got piles of tires. We can't do anything about that.
No.
Yeah, I didn't see piles of tires, but this, this...
It's similar to...
Hudson, not Hudson.
Latence.
Okay.
Junkyard, maybe. They still have hundreds of more tires up there.
Yeah, so we can probably do something about this.
So do we want to just refer it now to talk to counsel when we have our meeting on the 5th?
Yeah.
I think it should be discussed to legal while we're having our other meeting.
Yep, okay. We can do that.
Do you want to talk about the other case?
What other one?
Moran?
Moran Road, yes. So on another subject, we have campers on 185 Moran Road doing things in the next door neighbor's driveway. They're running back and forth. I, I don't know what's going on there. I tried to call the homeowner about that today. I got a quick call back, and there was somebody in the background yelling, so I asked her if it would be better for her to call me back, and she hasn't as of yet. So I'm waiting to hear back, but I think this is the same kind of thing. You can only have a camper on your property if it's yours. There's no tenting.
Right.
There's no septic stuff for him. I don't know if he's using the house. I can't say one way or another. But from the neighbor's complaint, and there's a couple neighbors in the neighborhood that are willing to sign a petition, just like George has here about this. This is something that has to be addressed pretty soon, and I think the 5th is probably pushing it, but...
Well, if there, if there's a clear violation of our zoning, we could send them a cease and desist immediately.
Yep. But I think that should come from the lawyer. I mean, we can send it through the town, but...
Yeah, get a, get a legal one.
For us to do it, it's going to take two weeks, and I think we could put legal on this.
You should take a ride up there, though, just so you're familiar with what's going on.
Yeah, where is this?
185 Moran Road. I mean, it's not, yeah, it's not like it's hidden. When you drive past the end of their driveway, the tent is right there. You can see it from everywhere. You know, and he's got a tent with all kinds of tops tied down over it, so it's not leaking and...
Wow.
So, like I said, I tried to make contact, and I will still try and make contact and let them know that that has to be taken care of, but I think this should be something that we send to the lawyer ASAP. Because there is a provision for three years for mobile or a temporary housing while you're building a house, but they're not building anything over there. And this definitely has to be addressed, because there is a health violation there, because if he's going out in the woods, I mean, people are seeing him, that's not... We don't have services in town for that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Mr. Road has cut in, cut in a pathway or where he intends to put his road, and he has a culvert in there with plywood over the culvert, so he can get across, but there's a lot that needs, needs to be done for him to get his driveway in.
Yep, and that's another thing that we should mention while we're there at the...
Okay.
The thing, because that's just, not only is it hokey, there's it's not the right way to do it, and he doesn't have a permit to put it there yet from the road agent.
Yeah.
So... All right, do we have anything else?
Only the minutes.
I had no problems with the minutes.
I have no problems with the minutes. The only thing I had was second page, first bullet head, discuss Holt Lane and other similar roads.
Yeah.
The very last sentence, case asks the Select Board assistance to send the maps and contact information to Lockwood and Town Council. I would just add town.
I'd already sent that to for a brief review.
Right, I know, but I just want to change in a minute that we sent them to both of them, because we did that.
Move to approve is amended.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else for the good of the town? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Good night, everyone.